About deliberations. But all that we say and do, we bring glory to your name. Worship your holy name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us recite the pleas. I plead to the heavens to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please kill them all, please.
Kerry Hodge, Ward one.
Here.
Jay Step, Ward two. Louis Tonsmyer, Ward three.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward four.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward five.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward six.
All right, our first item tonight is the approval of the council meeting minutes from February 17th. Councils have these long in advance tonight. Chair, will you entertain any corrections, additions, edits, or motions?
Mayor didn't see any corrections or additions, make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
And minutes are approved. We have a second reading of an ordinance to the, first one is the amendment to the retirement plan ordinance. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor and council, this is the second reading. As you recall, last meeting, you approved the investment advisor agreement. In next meeting, I'll have the benefit trustee agreement on there. But this amends the ordinance to accept the contract that we, you approved last meeting for the week's retirement solutions. And next meeting will be benefit trustee company out of Kansas. Have to get with Keith and make sure that the language in the contract is sufficient. But basically, it's a second reading approving this ordinance change.
Any questions for Dan at this point? Or any other discussion? If not, Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. We have an amendment to our permit fees ordinance. Mr. Grove.
Yeah, this amends a section of the code to allow entities constructing or remodeling low-income housing through a city of Cartersville, sponsor grant to, allows council to waive fees relative to those by resolution. There's a resolution later on the agenda that waives the specific fees. This is up for second reading. There's no changes since first reading. It's recommended for your approval.
Any discussion? Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We've got a rezoning, second reading tonight. Your office is going to take us through that.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission recommended approval to rezone the property in question at Non-Medical Drive off 20 from P.S. Professional Services to O.C. Office Commercial with particular conditions related to medical uses. In your packet, you see those are clinics, excludes veterinary clinic, hospices, hospitals, laboratories, medical and dental, medical offices, excludes veterinary, nursing home facilities, personal care homes with special use permit, and research laboratories. The applicant is here. There have been no changes. And in your motion, if you so choose, please make sure to spell out the conditions. Thank you.
Any questions for Richard at this point?
Excuse me. Richard, remind me, please, we don't have the diagram in front of us tonight. We did two weeks ago. Is this the only building on the street?
Right over there.
Oh, excuse me. It is not the only building.
No.
The two others?
Georgia Bone and Joy, is that the one that's right behind it, at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Right back, yes.
Would be.
Yes, you've got Dr. Bevel's properties on the east side of Medical Drive, across the street there from the property in question. And then behind the property that does not have Medical Drive frontage, you've got Dr. Muller's property. We don't have an aerial to show up here because ours are out of date. I didn't feel it was appropriate to show it up.
And the other, the other buildings on the street are already getting city services. Is that correct?
Mr. Elliott can answer that more appropriately regarding trash. I'm not aware if they do or do not.
I think we got a couple of personal customs in the area. We did some research back, I think the conditions, the original conditions in the United States of America in 2002 that wanted to keep the street private or upgraded city standards. Presently, right now, we are not sweeping that street on how we maintain it in many ways where our department goes. That's about all I can add.
All right, well, I'm going to open up a public hearing for the zoning application, Z 11-01. If anybody wishes to speak, come forward and speak for or against, they may do so at this time. And if you would, sir, state your name and your address for our court, please.
Quarterly Thomas, address 699 Collier Road, Atlanta, Georgia 30318. Just, I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has any. But I guess the, the goal here is that the building is designed to operate as a hospice house. And as it stands, well, we're not allowed to operate a hospice in a P.S. zoned property. So we figured we'd go to O.C., but restrict it so that it could never turn into a restaurant or a bank or anything like that, just strictly for medical purposes.
This is a public hearing. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none step forward, I'll close the public hearing. And council, if we could have further discussion or we can entertain a motion.
Mayor, I think this would be a good thing. I'd be glad to try a motion, but I do want to be sure that we include the recommendation from our planning commission. Make a motion that T. Shaw, Cartersville property located at Non-Medical Drive be approved, but also that Medical Drive must be upgraded before this private drive can be accepted as a public street. So that would be included in my motion.
And would you like to include in your motion the restrictions that were put on that zoning through the planning commission?
Yes, sir, I certainly would. I apologize, yes. Include P.S. to O.C. with the conditions and the ones that are included. And I think there are two, four, six, seven of them.
I've got a motion to approve the rezoning with the conditions that were set forth from the planning commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Next item is the update of our urban redevelopment plan. Multitasking tonight, really noticeable.
At the end of last year, the mayor and council chose to adopt an urban redevelopment plan that includes the residential area north of downtown, North Town, two job tax credit areas from the state known as opportunity zones. These areas are northwest industrial and south industrial. As part of this adopted plan, the local requirement is that, once a quarter, an update shall be presented to the mayor and council at a public meeting. And this is that quarterly update. Drainage problems have been a longstanding concern for North Town residents. The CDBG money from the federal government, a grant fund in the amount of $500,000 for the Well Street Stormwater Project, was awarded in 2009. The project is ongoing and scheduled for completion in May 2011. Based on surveys and discussions with residents in the North Town area, the community is concerned about lack of home maintenance. Residents are concerned about low-income and elderly residents who cannot afford to upkeep or physically unable to maintain their properties. Staff is reviewing possibilities for further federal grant funding in form of community development block grant money for home improvement projects for owner-occupied-only residences. The city has received further federal money in the amount of $748,897 previously. Single-family homes are proposed to be built in the North Town area in partnership with Habitat for Humanity and the Etowah Housing Authority. Instruction on the first structure is scheduled again in March at the corner of Porter Street and Current Street at 118 Current Street. Future homes are proposed to be built on Johnson Street and Martleth King Jr. Drive. In December of last year, staff was notified by the state, as I mentioned, about the opportunity zones job tax credit program being approved. And staff has already worked with the first industry to be approved to take advantage of the job tax credits. Southern Yarn Dires at 101 Conyers Industrial Drive. Staff is currently working with Americo on the credits as well. Finally, staff is working with Tilly Properties representatives regarding their request to enlarge the Northwest Industrial Opportunity Zone boundaries to include the former Goodyear Mill property. Based on conversations with state officials, boundaries can be amended, and staff has received similar requests at the state level for cities and counties across the state. So we feel good about this possibility of getting it done this year. And we've already heard that, that y'all might be amenable to this. So we appreciate the direction in allowing staff to pursue that.
Want Richard?
Thank you.
Have a question.
Mr. Osborne.
I don't see, unless I just missed it. What about the, at the end of Johnson Street and that old, uh, sewing company? I can't think of the name of it.
Spring City?
Spring, yeah. Is that included in this, uh, update?
Spring City is a part of the Northwest Industrial Opportunity Zone. So if a company hires two new full-time employees and keeps them, yes, they would be eligible for a $3,500 state job tax credit per job. And that's minimum of two jobs. And, you know, it would be up to, I mean, whatever number they employed.
That place is open there, Spring City?
Not Spring City itself as one company, but there are small companies operating out of that. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I have a question, Mr. Osborne. Ms. Hodge probably knows this, but I don't. Mr. Osborne, are these houses spread out enough that, in your opinion, it would be an incentive for the streets that they're on, for other houses to upgrade and paint? And so it's spread out pretty much?
Yes, ma'am. I think they've done a very good job of placement and determining where those properties need to be, taken better care of, and new structures. Done a really good job, thank you.
Anything else for Richard?
Yeah, we've got a great group of, obviously, grant-writing folks. The staff, really from all the departments, helps out. And y'all deserve a pat on the back for adopting the plan to begin with, so thank you.
Thank you. So, Gibson, we need to approve this? There's really nothing to vote on, it's just an update, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you. We do have the first reading of an ordinance tonight relating to our utilities ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an amendment to the utilities ordinance. There are times relative to things like meter malfunction, line breaks, meter tampering, lack of occupancy, clerical errors, and computer malfunctions where the city needs to work with individual accounts and adjust bills, give refunds. This defines those and gives staff the authority to do that.
Any questions about this ordinance? If there are none, we will hold that into consideration for our next meeting, which will actually be part seven today. I agree with you on that today.
There you go.
You agree with that?
Aye. Uh, next item is a waiver of building permit fees.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you earlier approved the ordinance to the permit fee ordinance, I am here to request the waiver of the building permit fees for the property that is being constructed by Habitat for Humanity in partnership with the city located at 118 Current Street.
Questions for Mr. Quest or any discussion? Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Motion to approve resolution.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye. Motion carries.
Connie, just out of curiosity, you got the second on that. Kerry was quick on the buzzer. Sorry, it was a little fast. We've had an easement for the electric department.
Yes, sir, Mayor, this is an easement for permission to cross the property of the Collins Point Shopping Center and order for us to serve the new AutoZone store that is at that location. And I request that you approve this easement.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Anybody want to give me a motion?
I will. Motion to approve the easement as described.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
David, continue on, sir.
The next item is surplus items. We have several pieces of distribution equipment that needs disposal. This is equipment which contains oil and needs to be disposed of at a certified oil disposal facility. So I ask that you declare it surplus so that we may salvage it.
I've got a question about this. David, is, you mentioned down here that we would not, these will not be sold on Gov. deals. Do we, do we have to pay to have these salvaged?
Yes.
Okay. There is a cost to us.
Right, it's not something we would want to put on Gov. deals for liability reasons. Because you don't know what the next person who owns it is going to do with the oil. So you won't have paperwork showing that we did indeed dispose of it and dispose of it properly.
Are there PCBs in it? Is that?
There's not. These particular pieces of equipment are non-PCB. But yes, that is the reason for doing that. They could, for some reason, be found to have PCBs.
So we don't want that liability. We want to make sure that we.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve, ma'am.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor, we have agreement for you from AT&amp;T to remove their above-ground lines by the Public Safety Headquarters on Caswell Road where they intend to build that new building. And estimated cost is $96,526.51 to be paid from 2007 Soploss. Those lines we moved across the street and moved underground. Recommend approval of this agreement.
Chair, will you entertain a motion or any discussion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we got a change order at the Etowah Pump Station. Mr. Collin.
Mayor, council, this item is for an increase in the contract for engineering fees for Jordan Jones and Golding for services they provided on design of the emergency pump station. And also, it's for services on the high-service pump station stabilization project that we had going on. The original contract with them was for $46,000. We increased the scope of the work, requested this amount for this work is $20,440. So we recommend increasing the contract to $66,440. Will be paid for from the budget. We plans to hopefully reimburse it with a bond issue later on.
Questions about the same?
Do they foresee any other additions to this?
This covers the scope of this stage of work. Now, the next step is to actually design the pump station. This is for, was for the design of the piping portion of the project. The next step will be the design of the actual pump station with the pumps and additional equipment involved. So there will be more engineering costs associated with the pump station.
Any other questions or discussion?
Motion to approve the change order.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on, sir.
The next item is for purchase of two repair bands to use on large diameter pipes. We used one of these recently on the repair of the 36-inch feeder main. We found it to be a very versatile repair item. And we, you know, would like to have these in our inventory in case another emergency comes up. We received prices from two different suppliers. The low price submitted by Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company was $17,631.1. We recommend approval of this. It will be paid for as a budget item.
Is this the temporary fixed piece?
No, this is a permanent.
We're going to keep the permanent fixed pieces in stock in case this happens again.
Right.
Mayor, is this for one or is this times two?
Well, it's, it's for two different ones. It's for a 24-inch repair clamp and a 36-inch repair clamp. And those are the two largest size finished water pipe sizes that we have in our system.
So 17's for both of them, not?
Yes, yes, that's for both.
Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the bid from Consolidated Pipe and Supply.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, David. Mr. Riggs.
Yes, Mayor and council, this is to purchase 200 residential gas meters to replenish our stock. And we're recommending the low bidder equipment controls at a cost of $12,400.
Mr. Riggs, are these prices going, do you remember what we paid the last time? Are these prices going up or is it?
It's about the same.
About the same.
Any other questions? Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the purchase of the low bid from Equipment Control Supply Company.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
We do have one item to add if councilmen desires. I'll entertain a motion to add that item.
Motion to add the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item is added. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mayor and council, this past Monday's storms destroyed a section of our safety netting at the Richard Bale Field at the Cartersville Baseball Complex, which is home of the Cartersville Purple Hurricane baseball team. We are getting that area, getting, we got that net repaired or patched back repaired, and we're replacing that netting at a cost of $35.99. But when they were repairing this to play the game yesterday, the other netting, they had to pull on some of the other netting. And it is, and it's tearing too. It's ready to, it's, it's ran its life and it's time to be replaced. I would have budgeted the next year's budget trying to stretch this year out of it, but that's not going to be possible. But the contractor that we have, who got the low quote from our, another project at the Rudy York Field, he gave me a price of $8,812.54 to replace the remaining netting and hardware and cable. And I recommend accepting that price from South Harbor. We have all their e-verify and save documents on file.
And I was expecting, this will be taken out of the parks maintenance budget?
It will be, yeah. I've got money budgeted to allow that for our netting, but this exceeds that.
All right, any questions?
I think we talked about this in work session, and I'm still confused. Are we approving two separate amounts or are we approving in totality $8,812.54?
Well, the, I'd already talked to Mr. Grove, and I thought, at that time, I didn't have the price to repair it, but I had to repair it. But this, this is just approving the 88, 12, 54.
Okay.
Other questions? Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Motion for approval for the safety netting for the ball field.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Greg. Is there any, what's wrong?
Do you have anybody else?
We will come back.
While you're up here, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say that with our baseball netting, you know, baseball is in the air and the Cardinals Little League opens up their season next Saturday, March 12th, with their opening, opening day. And I'd like to invite everybody out to come. They've got, got some new people running the program. They're doing an exceptional job. And come out and watch some good baseball.
Thank you.
Sorry, I will also add that we've got, we, I'll announce this at our next session, but our Moonlight Walk that we had this past February was our largest Moonlight Walk that we've had so far. We had over 70 people. And Mr. Grove and the mayor were there. We had, we had some good crowds.
That'll keep them coming back more. All right, any other business that needs to come for council this evening?
Mayor, I'd like to recognize someone, please.
Go right ahead.
We had the DDA award meeting last Thursday night, and a lot of honors were given out. But the big honor went to our Public Works Department for their work during the storm, the snowstorm. As we all know, watching television, and many cities were just shut down and no one was moving and no one was able to get to a business, but not in Cartersville. So they spent the night on the floor in Public Works. They're out there at 4:00 in the morning, and I'm awfully proud of them. I know we all are.
Very good. Well said. Anyone else?
Yes, if you don't mind, I'd like to take just a moment to clarify my position on an issue, if you don't mind. This week, it was brought to my attention that there are some concerns on where I stand with employee wage increases. I, of course, do not speak on behalf of this entire council, nor do I speak on behalf of the mayor. But it is in my opinion currently that council has taken the best steps we can by having that salary study so that we can continue discussion on the wage increases. To clarify my position personally, this is a budget issue, and it has been for several years. Can the city afford to increase payroll? That's where we're trying to determine. I stress this very, very strongly. If the city finds that we can afford wage increases, then I hope, as a council, we continue to have that conversation. In the future, should anyone have any questions or concerns where I stand on any issue with the city, I'm certainly available and welcome to conversation. And I hope that clarifies where I stand. Thank you.
Anyone else? Don't wait for me to say. Oh, man, if you haven't spoken all meeting, it's, that's got to be some kind of city record. I'll just say this, this fuzzy-looking growth on my face. Greg talked about baseball being in the air. Well, the Cardinals Royals basketball team made it into the final eight. And I've had the pleasure of being on, in my day job, being able to be around that. So I started off in something lazy over the weekend, and I just only kind of turned this into a playoff here. They play Saturday, so hopefully I won't have to shave this for a couple more weeks. But, but we'll see what happens. If there's no other business to conduct, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.